Let's bow together. Father, we love you and we thank you for this day, for your continued blessings. I thank you for safe travels to the meeting and ask that you protect and guide us in all things today in Christ's name. Amen. Join us in the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. We have no scheduled public hearings today, but we do have some awards and presentations. This is always a nice part of our meetings and I know that these students would love to stay with us for an hour and a half if we could just put them at the end of the meeting, but we don't want to do that. We want you guys to get back. We have four or five of our area students who we want to recognize and I'm going to call out the names. I know two or three of them are not here, but if I call out your name, guys, if you will, just come up here and you can turn and face the crowd, the crowd, all of them. And then we're going to come down, we're going to come down and join you as well. So, but we have Ra'Shawn Coleman, a student at Florilla High School, and then we'll read the proclamations in just a moment. So Ra'Shawn, if he were here, we would recognize him. Now we will deliver these to the kids that are not here. Parker Black, who is a student at Strawn High School. And Cole Petrie, a student at Andalusia High School. Cole, if you will, just come right here and again, you can just space the group out there. And Landon Marshall from Andalusia High School. And Elijah McMeans of Florilla High School. So the Andalusia students are represented here. Commissioners, I would love for us just to all go down and then we'll read these proclamations. We'd love to get in pictures, guys, if you don't mind. And I know you, Morgan, you more than want to get pictures, probably.
I'll take the picture.
No, these are running. What we have, guys, is a proclamation from the county commission. They're all similar in wording, but I'd like to read one. Let me read one that's here, how about that? So Cole Petrie. And Landon, so I'll read that. So whereas Landon Marshall, a student at Andalusia High School, was recognized by the Alabama Sportswriters Association as a member of the 2023 first team All-State Football in Class 4A. And whereas his exceptional efforts as a senior defensive lineman led him, led him securing his deserved recognition from the state's sportswriters. And whereas he is to be commended for an exciting, heartfelt, and successful year, and he should rightly take pride in the accomplishments and the record he earned. And whereas it gives us tremendous amount of pleasure to express the land on behalf of the Covington County Commission and all the citizens of Covington County, our sincere congratulations on achieving innumerable successes and accomplishments and our appreciation for your demonstration, for your peers, and all of us in your community, that great accomplishments can be realized with hard work, perseverance, practice, and commitment. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Covington County Commission is pleased to publicly commend Landon Marshall for his fine efforts and to present this proclamation as an expression of the admiration of this commission and all our citizens to Landon Marshall for his accomplishments on the field during the 2023 football season. Further, we wish him all success in his future endeavors, adopting and prove this 23rd day of January 2024. So we're going to present these, I'm going to let these guys each take one, I think. Mike can get it. And we will see if you can figure out who belongs to what. So who, who has Landon?
I do.
How about presenting Landon? Landon, you want to make a speech or you can just take it? And then, and then who has Cole?
Yeah, we want to get your picture hanging.
Well, we'll. You all listen. You're on the desk.
We already done this one. Let me just get in the middle.
That'll work.
You want to get with them?
I'm going to get too big, man, right here.
Guys, we do appreciate your efforts this year and congratulate you on a great season and hope that you have a great career for the rest of your school and then the adults. Congratulations. Thank y'all for coming out. Y'all be stuck with us or not, we'll cover.
We need some intelligence. Can we not hit the flags?
Yep.
Thank you. Yeah, who you got?
You'll walk that one. And next, we have a proclamation that we want to present. We have so many folks in our county that contribute day in and day out for the good of all of us. Many of those who contribute do so in the, in the field of youth sports and this morning's is no exception. We've asked Jed Blackwell and other, are there other members of the reg board that are here? Okay. Would love for you to come up. We want you to help present this one, Jed, if you will. Come on up and we'll give you a chance to make comment if you'd like to. But we're pleased to have Jonathan McKinney with us. Jonathan, if you will, come on up with Jed and I can tell you, the commission joins with the reg board members in their appreciation for the great work that you and others like you do. And I know you'll want to make a speech here in just a bit, so just get ready. How about reading that for us and then you can make comment that's appropriate from the, from the reg board.
All right. A proclamation of the Covington County Commission. Whereas Jonathan McKinney has served as the president of the Covington County Boys Bay Area League for five years and vice president for another five years, representing the interests of the Covington County Recreation Board for over 10 years. And whereas during his years of volunteer service, Mr. McKinney has proven to be a great assistance to Covington County, its commission members, to all members of the Covington County Recreation Board. He has displayed exemplary dedication to best interest of Covington County Recreation Board and the children of this community. And whereas Mr. McKinney ended his volunteer service at the year of 2023 and the Covington County Commission deemed inappropriate that his service be acknowledged, they have further wishes to express its sincere appreciation and thanks to Mr. McKinney for his distinguished service for the Covington County Recreation Board and youth sports in Covington County. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the members of the Covington County Commission hereby extend personal congratulations to Mr. McKinney for his many years of distinguished service and extending him our best wishes for many years of practice in the future. Ladies and gentlemen, before you today is Mr. John McKinney, who did 10 years of his life volunteering to help thousands of kids here in Covington County. A lot, a lot of things that you don't realize is he gets phone calls pretty much every night. He goes to the bank pretty much every other day. He helps children that you've never heard of, that don't have the funds to play youth sports, to make sure that they play youth sports. This is what makes Covington County and the place that we live such a wonderful place. And God bless Jonathan. We're so thankful for him and his many years of service. So please join me in the mission for honoring John today for all.
Good deal. Thank you so much.
Thank you, John.
We do appreciate those that volunteer. There are dozens just like him that have been at it for many years. So thank you for your continued contribution.
If somebody has an unselfish thing of themselves, help other people.
Yep, absolutely.
Means a lot, they don't get the credit they need.
Yeah. Well, we're glad to have y'all with us today. Thank you. Commissioners or other elected officials, appointed officials, we are giving you a chance to address the group now. Judge, do you have anything?
I don't.
All right. Mr. Patterson?
I do. Good morning to everyone. The tax year started in October and we're still working on it. The liquid list, well, the deadline was December 31st. We're at a million dollars on 16 million that we were to collect. We're down to $1 million uncollected, which we will collect. It just takes a little time. Sometimes people want to wait an extra month and that's fine. So we're working on that. I gave some of the county commissioners and I'll give the other two a list of the business personal property that has not been paid. And I'd like to also say that we, thanks to some of the citizens in Covington County and we have collected 500, tapping on 500 over 65 exemptions for this year. So we have pushed really hard for everyone that turns 65 to sign up for this and we're right at 500. So that's a good mark for this year. Whether it's the right number, I'm not sure because we don't know, we don't know birthdays when we take this information, but we try to get the message out. So I thank all of y'all and thank the citizens that have helped us with that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Jeff. Normally I have the sheriff with us. I don't see him or a representative here. He may come in a little later, so we'll relax him at that time. Commissioners, the, under the consent agenda, we have the minutes of the January 9th meeting. Those were presented to you by email. You've had a chance to review them. Are there any corrections or changes or is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion, check.
Okay. Is there a second? A second. There is a motion and second. Know if anybody else has anything to point out or change or correct. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. All right, those are approved. Under old business, we carried over two or three items. First, we'll consider the model floodplain development ordinance that came up very briefly at a prior meeting and we asked the administrator to review those and she's had conversation with the association. We've had the attorney reviewing that and we've had the engineer looking at it. And so the status of it today, Morgan, you want to tell us where we are?
Yes. The, there need to be some changes to the document that was shared and the Association of County Commissions has worked with a DECA and has provided some input on what some of those changes should be from a statewide perspective so that Covington County would not stand alone. It would be a united response from all counties. And so that came to us yesterday and so I'm taking that under review. And also the engineers department has a copy of it. So where, where this leads is that you guys will be able to adopt a recommended floodplain ordinance that is also being adopted by other counties. It's just not finalized this morning.
So with that in mind, we are hitting, we're approaching a deadline on turning that back in. So what I would like to recommend is that we adopt the final proposal that the association works out, works out with A.D.M., subject to the final review of our attorney and engineer. And if they sign off on it and agree to it, then I think we'll have a document that we'll be comfortable with. What are your thoughts on that, Commissioner?
I think that's fine. I do, like you said, I know we're coming up to a deadline that we have to hit, so I'll go ahead and as long as, you know, the engineer and the attorney and everything see it's fit.
The, interestingly, what it appears is that compared to where we were 10 years ago or whenever this was last adopted by us, they're attempting to shift responsibility for enforcement and so forth on the, on the county engineer. In our case, the county engineer, who is the manager of the floodplain program. And I don't think that's something we're interested in and that's why the association's heavily involved. So these folks know what, what our concerns are and I think that if they're happy with it, they will have made sure those concerns are addressed. So you want to make that as a motion? Mike?
Yes.
Is there a second? Motion, second. Kenneth, do you have questions for the attorney or Ron on this? Hearing none. The motion is to adopt the, the ordinance subject to final approval and review by the attorney and engineer. Will vote all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay. Thank you. So we'll work through that with you over the next few days. Next is consider approval of school resource officer contract with Covington County Board of Education. Do we have a final document on that yet?
I do not.
Okay. The sheriff would be here. I'm not sure if he got called out. So that's something that we're just going to have to wait until the next meeting because the sheriff has had follow-up conversations with the school board and so he should bring the final document for us to consider. We have shared cost, so you'll know on, on school resource officers, that's been the case with, between the commission, the sheriff, and the, and the Covington County Board of Education for many, many years. Of course, those costs have continued to go up, so there are adjustments to who shares, who shares at what level. And that's the current conversation is to make sure we're all on the same page. So hopefully he'll get those to us at, before the end of this meeting or certainly by the next meeting, because I do know he had the conversations. Next is consider policy change, all this under old business. Consider policy change for travel expenses. And again, I'm going to call on Morgan to provide a status on that and maybe make a proposal on what we do for an interim.
As of today, the county does not have an official personnel policy related to travel as part of its manual. What I recommend that you do today is adopt an interim policy that piggybacks on the federal rates for per diem and travel reimbursement, just to put something in place to provide structure to your department heads as it relates to travel that they're preapproving for the employees, you know, whether it's training or out of county business that needs to be handled. If you adopt an interim policy that piggybacks on the federal rate, we can then make adjustments that are specific to Covington County that take into account special needs that you all may have as it relates to, you know, day of, you know, one day trainings in nearby and we can make adjustments to the per diem rates. But that level of detail needs a little bit of discussion, both with Karen's office and perhaps some of the department heads. So my recommendation to you today is to adopt an interim policy that piggybacks on the federal rates for 2024. And between now and the time that we're able to meet with your department heads, we can have a more detailed and specialized policy to put for your consideration as it relates to the way you all operate here.
What's the federal rate right now? Because I think it just went up again, the best I remember.
It did. So my recommendation on mileage is to stick with the IRS rates and I think that those changed maybe in June of last year and I think there's a pending change sometime soon. I apologize, I can't remember when it's coming up, but keep that one connected so that it changes automatically. Currently, the non, the, the, the base rate for meals and incidentals is $59 a day and lodging is at $106 a day. I will go ahead and forecast for you that lodging at $106 is, is almost impossible. So if we, if you adopt this interim policy between now and when we get another one for you, you may have some requests for approval outside of the policy, which of course we would need to consider if they were reasonable and appropriate. But this is a good place to start. And so it's at $59 a day, which of course needs to be prorated for, you know, less than a full day of out of office travel.
And there's some high cost areas in Covington, in Alabama. That includes Huntsville, Madison County. It includes Gulf Shores and Baldwin County and it seems like Jefferson, but for sure those other two. And those are 69 a day. And I think that we would just, since that's a published rate that the IRS releases regularly, I think it'd be good just to tie to that. So if it's a high cost, travel to a high cost area, it'd be the additional money. But that gives us something firm to start with, with hopes of getting a proposal, what, over 30 days or something like that, maybe?
Sure, absolutely.
Okay. So you hear the recommendation? What are your thoughts on that?
I suggest we go ahead and adopt it, like you said, for interim until we get a, a proposal in front of us.
Okay. So is there, that, that is a suggestion or is that a motion?
Yes.
All right. Follow the federal rates, publish federal rates. And the good thing is that they change, it changes, it's automatic. So is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second? Anybody else have questions that you want to ask Morgan or point, you know, things that are, you think that we need to consider as she's moving forward with Karen on this proposal? All right. We'll vote all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. All right. That is, that is adopted and we'll move forward with something that has a little more detail in it in a short time. Okay, that covered all the old business, so let's move on to new business. Consider board appointments, commissioners. On page two of your book or packet, it has three different entities that we make board appointments to that have some renewals to consider. First is the Covington County Recreation Board. These slots all expire in the month of March. A little ahead of the game, we have Dr. Andrew Carter, who is serving a two-year term. Brian Cox is a two-year term. Shane Cook, Jed Blackwell, and Paul Watley, I understand are all one-year terms? Is that still the status? Okay. So my understanding is all five of those folks are willing to be reappointed if we choose or we could replace any of them. If you're going to do it, this is a good time while Jed's here, do it in front of him. What are your thoughts?
You haven't spoke with all of them?
Certainly recommend, these folks.
And they, look here, if they're willing to be reappointed because we have trouble with somebody that does boards, I'm going to make that motion.
All right. Motion to reappoint all five.
Unless Jonathan wants to come back on.
And second, second by Tommy.
He's going to have retirement.
All right. I'm hearing other comments, any other comments or questions? That's my, anybody else? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Thank y'all, Jed. We appreciate the continued service of all of you guys that are leading that effort because it does impact a bunch of families in this county, doesn't it? Really does. The next one to look at is OCAP, which serves what I would say are needier families in response to situations of exceptional need in our county. And we have one board member who is, has finished a term and is certainly up for reappointment. It's a five-year term, so it's almost like that, it'll be over. Susan Harris has willingly served to finish this term and I, my understanding was she's willing to be reappointed if we insist or choose on it. Motion? Second?
If she says she's willing, motion.
If there is no other conversation on it, let's vote all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. And that, Susan, that is a board that is lost to most of us. I know that you have invested a lot of time in it, we appreciate that. And it is significant to the families it serves. That's a significant service and they serve, I don't know how many dozens and dozens of families in our county, day in and day out. So thank you for being willing to do that. And one other board. Terry Holly had held a position on the Southeast Alabama Regional Planning and Development Board. We have to have three of our appointees there, have to be elected officials. Terry was serving in that capacity as, as the mayor of Florilla. He stepped down. Patricia Gunner had been serving as, what's the term? Alternate, an alternate board member, not one of the five voting, but as an alternate to step into a slot when, when needed from time to time. She's willing to step into the permanent position and that would be an elected official filling that slot, which is appropriate and necessary under their bylaws. So what are your thoughts? Patricia Gunner's willing unless, what, you want to put your name in the place of Patricia?
I made a motion.
You talked to her.
I did, yeah, I did, yeah.
Do we have a point of position where she's going?
We'll have that as an open position, yeah, that we can fill, you know, in the next time. The good thing is we'll have five that are voting members and so we just appoint an alternate, kind of become familiar with what they do. Yeah, it's a great, another great agency that serves us well. So what are your wishes?
I hadn't made a motion.
You did? I didn't catch it. Okay, a motion to.
We were all talking at the same time.
Yeah, okay. So there's a motion to appoint Patricia to the permanent member position, a voting member position. Was there a second on that?
Second.
All right. Questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Those are none. Thank you, Patricia, for being willing to step up. Consider the chamber banquet. There's paperwork in front of you. The commission is a member of the chamber and we typically participate in the annual chamber banquet, which is certainly an important function in our county every year. And I think the question is, do we want to approve participation or you want to count? What do we need?
I thought that was a circus.
Well, you know, I did determine the first thing that I thought.
It will be when we get.
I had to figure out what that was.
Once the commission gets there, it will be.
Yeah.
We just need to determine if y'all want to participate and so at what level?
I make a motion, we participate in it. I'm not sure what we're doing, can remember what we've done in the past, but I would recommend the same participation, yeah.
Okay. Is there a second on that?
Second.
Motion and second, to participate at the same level as prior year. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. All right, that carries. Consider rent rate increase for Stokes Lodge. Page three is a document, this is for, this is a polling place and they're proposing a rental rate of $100 per day for the election days. What are your wishes on that, Commissioner?
How many, and Judge, you make an answer, how many individual places do we have? Then do we rent all those?
No.
How many places do we rent? Do you know?
I do not know. We pay everyone, the $50 is the fee that we pay for every polling precinct per election with the exception of Qantas and they have a higher rate because that's their adopted rate for the usage of that building.
My thought was if we do it for one, the rest of them don't want to come as part. So then we do it all at one time and blanket all of them?
I would recommend it because this has not been changed since I've been a part of elections back years ago.
And all the rest of them are the same as this, the $50?
Yes, everyone gets the $50 with exception of Qantas.
So I would just go ahead and make the motion if we do Stokes, let's just do all of them at the same time, go from 50 to 100.
$100 rate. Okay, that's, you hear the motion? Is there a second?
I second.
Well, let's talk about it. What are your wishes on that? Questions on that, anything else?
No questions.
Good enough. Let's vote all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. All right, that's approved.
Oh, gosh, Ron.
All right. Do we have, we have some items on page four that are, it's a list of surplus items coming out of the sheriff's department. We just need to declare these items. It's a Dodge, 2014 Dodge Caravan, a 2004 Freightliner M2, a 2004 Freightliner M2.
They're.
A 1985 International.
I think, I think we got something wrote wrong there.
Is it? Are those, are those things they have used?
That's an engineer, isn't it?
They had military vehicles that they got through some program and we don't have paperwork on one of the vehicles. I believe it's the International.
So all this is the sheriff's department? Okay.
It's stuff they received through federal.
I didn't know they did either. Well, what I would propose, that anything on this list that's proper to declare surplus if we get it completed?
We need to.
Yeah, we need to be, declare surplus, then that allows us to sell it at auction. We'll place all of this, I would assume, on govdeals.com. Is there a motion?
Yes, motion.
There is a motion. Is there a second? Second from Kenneth? Anybody have questions for the sheriff on this?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Let's, let's vote all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. All right, those are declared surplus. Karen, if you keep that straight, that's good. And then we were requested to consider purchase of a truck for the engine, trucks, trucks, multiple trucks for the engineers department. We're being asked to, oh, this must.
When we come up.
You probably need to, yeah. Are you able? So this coming March, we plan on selling four Mack triaxle dump trucks and the lowboy tractor. And then we intend on replacing that with two triaxle dump trucks and one lowboy tractor. So we're basically selling five and purchasing three. We have, currently, we have eight total triaxle dump trucks so that we can complete the FEMA work and so we're reducing our inventory.
Because you're wrapping up the FEMA projects pretty soon?
Yes, sir, we just purchased.
Okay. Do you have any idea on the, on the market for those that we're going to be selling? Are they strong or?
I don't know, but based off of the recent sales, we have, it's performed exceptionally well. If I'm not mistaken, we probably made an improvement in our investment.
Okay. Now, the spring, the spring auction, you know, like Karen, these are Jay and Wood?
Yes, sir, mid-March. Yes, sir, mid-March.
That's, I'm not sure, March, that's the one that's usually the strongest one of the year anyway.
Yes. Yeah. So the, the ask is approval to go ahead and begin the process of buying in three vehicles that are listed there, with the idea that we'll sell five. Correct. I like that idea. Reduce from five to three.
They usually give a guarantee when they've discounted equipment.
Yeah. Yeah, they provide a guarantee, I just don't have the information in front of me. So when is the spring sale? Will you be able to get these in before that sale, so we can go ahead and turn them loose? Mid-March, so we'll prep them at the end of February and take them up. We just, you know, have to take the stickers off, clean them up. Okay. Commissioners, what do you think? Any other questions on this before?
Do you know the availability of new trucks?
Yeah, the Lowboy tractor should be available in the next two weeks. I didn't get an idea on the others, I spoke with salesmen this morning, but I would think that they'll probably be available prior to the sale. So we shouldn't, we shouldn't have a big drop-off. Can we delay, can you put the purchase-delivery out close to the sale, so that we don't, we're not having to come up with the cash for the new ones, you know, 45, 60 days before the other's sale? I can't speak to that, I've not been in those discussions. If we can make that, if we can coordinate that, I think that'd be helpful, just to save, you know, help with the cash flow.
Especially the availability of the dump trucks coming in close.
Don't want to delay too much.
It won't hurt us if we went and sold them, wouldn't hurt your department, would it, if we went and sold those, and then say it was another five months before the other ones were ready, because I know we have trouble getting vehicles sometime. How bad would that stress your department?
They've already been ordered, as I understand, we're just waiting on the purchase order to be issued. If-
It's the wrong order.
There comes a point at which you have to place your order for the next year, and if you don't, then you're going to skip, you're going to get skipped. You're saying the company is already, these are already coming in, and they're- These are already coming in.
Okay. To that company?
Yes, to Kenworth of Birmingham.
Okay.
And we're not aware of a delay. We're not aware of a delay. We're not expecting a six-month delay. But we'll have them locked in if they do what you're saying, so they don't, just sold it out from under us. At this point, we just need to issue a PO. And, you know, that money's not due until- The PO is for 600, all up together, $662,670. That's actually to a couple of different companies, and these are all coming off state bid. This is the ACCA joint bid. ACCA's annual bid, okay. Do y'all want to, you want to go ahead and issue, approve the purchases of these? All right.
And see if we can do it closer to the deliver date or whatever after selling the other ones.
All right, there is a motion and a second, and just get us the, get us the list on the ones we're going to dispose of, so we can go ahead and act on those, and I guess we'll go ahead and get a guarantee, see what the guarantee is from the auction. And Mr. Rawls may already have that. I just, I don't have that, and he has the flu. So we have a motion and second, any other questions?
Just to, like, the dump bodies and all that's available as well, right?
Yes, sir. That price is for the truck with the dump body, for the two dumps, so that includes all of them.
One time we'd have an issue, get the bodies, we couldn't get the trucks, then one time the bodies would be in delay because of all this crazy mess that went on.
I think that's one of the-
Kind of article order, and everything, get them on the same page.
Yes, sir, I think that's one of the reasons that we've switched over to Kenworth, is the fact that they can deliver. All right, we have a motion and second. If there's nothing else, we'll vote all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same say. All right, that's approved. You have your reports, Forrest?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you for coming, the Ron. I know there are folks interested in the couple of the paving projects. Now, the weather has been awful up at 107 project, obviously we're waiting for two or three dry days, and then two more dry days to get in and do the asphalt, two or three days, so, and we just, it doesn't look good for the next couple of weeks, so we, you know, we're just waiting, the company's been ready, and we want to make sure that that gets done as soon as possible. I just hate that the weather's been like it has. And then I know there's interest in the paving, Tommy, in your district, I talked to Mark Murphy this morning, and he is working on getting the documents signed for the trust that owns one of the pieces of property that we're planning right away to. He said that would be completed today, and Lynn was expecting a W-9 from another right of way, a property owner, that he said it may very well be at his office, he's out sick, Lynn is out sick with the flu, but he thinks it'll be in his emails when he gets back, the guy's going to snap a picture of the W-9 and get it back to him, so that we can cut the check. So I think those are both in place, it's just, just getting loose ends tied up. Item F is at the bottom of your agenda, is considered amendment to the workforce classification, and Karen's been a little bit tall, since we've been here, so we'll-
You may mention this.
Yes, we need just changes to the workforce classification and manning chart.
All right, so the engineers department is making some adjustments. They have five folks that have retired in the last couple of months, or else, or have a pending retirement, and they're shifting some folks around to fill jobs, and we, in doing that, we realized that we had some classification problems. So they're proposing some changes to their manning chart. These proposed changes would cost an annual increase of $18,865.60 in the wage rates, but in the five that have retired, his intent is to replace only three of those, so you've got the budgeted amount for those two that have gone away, that will more than cover this increase. We're, you know, if you're dealing with operations in a department like Road Bridge, where it's funded by gas tax, they don't get the benefit of the new gas tax, the rebuild Alabama, they're still operating off of the old gas tax that has been relatively flat for years. So it's tight, and they're aware of that, and they were working closely with the administrator to manage their funds and their cash flow, but I think this is certainly an appropriate change, and ask what your wishes are on this.
I think it's a good idea to keep a lot of these, move these guys up and help them out, give them, because these are really the backbone of our, of our county. They're out when it's bad weather, it can weather the whole thing, so if it can help these guys, and it's not really going to cost us anything, like you said, it's going to be to the point where if you don't hire the two people, it's going to absorb the costs.
Yeah. So that's it.
I absolutely agree, too. You know, we've got to retain these people, keep them here and keep them working, and that's an incentive for them to stay.
Absolutely. Okay. So I'm hearing that as a motion, Ms. Lynn?
Yes, sir.
And a second, Michael, to approve these changes as presented. Commissioners, anybody else have a question or comment? If not, we'll vote all in favor, say aye. Opposed, same say. Motion passes. Next on the agenda is reports from staff. Anybody have anything you want to bring? Kevin? Nothing? You getting ready for election?
Yes, sir.
Commissioners, what do you have? Ms. Karen, do you have anything else?
I do.
Okay.
I'd like for Morgan to share her news. I asked her previously if she would love to, and I think it's such a wonderful thing, I think everybody needs to hear, so.
Thank you. For those of you who may not know, in April of last year, my eight-year-old daughter was diagnosed with bone cancer, and she was given a 32-week chemotherapy treatment plan, and she had a surgery in there as well, and she completed that treatment plan right, December 19th was her last admission, and we got home on the 23rd, so we were able to spend Christmas at home, which was a huge blessing, and really was the Christmas wish we had. And then she had her end-of-treatment scans on January 5th, and I am so grateful to be able to share with you that we got the call last week that her scans were clear, and so we are now moving into a new, a new chapter, but a good one, and I just want to say to all of you, you know, thank you for the support and the prayers that, you know, are known to me, and all of those that are unknown, and also for the grace that you all have shown me and my family during this time. It's a good day, it feels good, and I'm glad to be able to share that with you, and again, thank you for your support.
Thank you. All right. All right, Ms. Karen?
I'm concerned about the lodging allowance being what it is. We have a few people that have conferences coming up that we've got them reserved, can we postpone that portion?
We could say that instead of being bound by the 109, which is, I think that rate is a per diem rate, and we're going to give you this, or whatever they might is, we're just going to give you that money and that's it. But, yes, certainly we're going to find lodging that's more than that at every trip. So we could, we could do an actual cost on lodging, and just reimburse actual cost on lodging.
I would prefer that at this time.
And so, commissioners, we adopted the federal rates previously, but can we change that adoption to allow for reimbursement of actual cost on lodging?
I'm scared we make that amendment, too.
Okay. As a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Opposed, same say. That helps you, doesn't it?
Yes, it is.
Keeps you from being the bad guy. Okay. Yes, ma'am?
I would like to update that cats did receive two vans of the four orders upon receiving them, they are not where we will be able to use them and keep the schedule that we do now. There's a lot of factors. So I contacted the state, asked them to consider taking these two back and filling all four of the vans with side double doors and rear lift or handicap instead of the side that these are, and I'm waiting for an answer, as we speak.
I will say, I did walk out there, Ms. Tammy, this morning, she was talking about it, because I seen, I said, "Man, look at our new vans." I was excited, we got our new vans in, after it's been a year and a half, two years, but I did walk out there with her this morning to look, and they are not practical for what we do, where they load the wheelchair in now, like Tammy said, if someone is in that wheelchair, no one else can get on, and then the driver actually has to get out and, with these newer vans, and open the door every time, instead of having on that door, so I don't think they're very practical for our use.
Okay, all right. At least we saw progress.
Saw progress, yes, sir.
We did get two new vans for a little bit.
Two new vans. I have told him that I'm happy to deliver those back. They told me, just hold on to them right now. They are trying to sell them to someone else, so they are working with us, trying to convey our needs.
Okay. Sounds like a motion to adjourn, doesn't it?
Yes.
Morgan, have you-
Thank you, Rick.
-that you want to report?